Thumbs up?
All right. All right, good morning, everybody. It's nice to see a decent crowd for our Budget Committee meeting. So this is Curry County Budget Committee meeting. It's May 22nd. It's 10:00 a.m. in the morning, and I'll call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up on the agenda is amendment and approval of the agenda.
I have no amendments.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. That takes us to the second or the third item on the agenda, which is public comments. I don't have any public comment cards.
Walt did submit that.
But Walt did submit some questions. So Walt, do you want to step up to the -- well, there isn't a microphone here, but --
You can do it from here, I'm pretty loud.
We'll hand you a microphone because we want to get this recorded. And Walt, I'm assuming what you're going -- your public comment is also what I have in writing here?
Yes.
Okay, so I can recirculate that to the Budget Committee after you make your comments, sir.
Yes. And I'll just read through the questions, and as I told Jay, these are more for the Budget Committee to reflect on, not necessarily to give detailed answers to today. Question one, what departments are required by statute, federal or state, for the county which are not? Question two, does the Budget Committee, BOC, DCO, or others require all departments to submit an annual budget justification document? A budget justification document includes at a minimum, purpose of the department or fund, however you want to break it up, but purpose of the department, what the department accomplished the previous year and current year, what the department plans to accomplish with the requested funds asked for for the next budget year, stated goals, objectives, strategies, performance requirements, and this is like a department-level strategic plan type of thing. Five, what metrics are used to track success, performance metrics? And six, how the department's previous and current year's performance metrics have tracked against the planned objective? Last question, three, what is the amount of the budget past, present, and the next budget that is supplemented by external sources such as grants, targeted programs, donations, or other, federal, state, or other? Have these external sources been treated as part of the quote-unquote "core budget," or are they treated as short-term influxes that are transitory opportunities to accomplish something specific?
All right, thank you for that, Walt. And what I will do is I will make sure that your written questions or comments get circulated to each member of the Budget Committee. All right, that concludes the public comment part, so we will move forward to item four on the agenda, which is discussion. So this is the elephant in the room. As everyone is aware, we had proposed a funding solution of a levy. That levy failed in last night's ballot. So we are now standing on the edge of the first financial cliff that we have been talking about. So we'll need to navigate that forward, and thankful you're here today, Kena.
Good morning. So I have presented you with a draft proposed budget document. I'll go over a few items within this document. These are budgets that have been submitted to me from department heads. The few changes that I did make was into capital expenditures. Those are easy items to adjust off a budget, new vehicles, those type of things. You know, when we're in a budget crisis, those are easy adjustments that we can remove off a budget. So we have presented you with a budget that is $5,894,173 less than FY24's budget. And the attached document that I gave you with the colors will show the budget decrease or increase by fund line item from FY24's adopted to FY25's proposed. Excuse me, the items in blue are funds that are not supported by general fund dollars. These are standalone funds or funds such as administration, which is the kind of orange at the bottom, pinkish color at the bottom, which are supported by the other funds, but not directly backfilled by the general fund dollars. I did put a couple comments in there of what the decrease or increase consisted of, just so everyone could see that. The presented budget that I'm providing, a total budget across all funds, is $53,779,590. That is including all funds, reserved funds, pool account funds, cash funds, everything across the board. All funds are balanced with the exception of the general fund. If you look at -- sorry, got to remember which one it is. If you look at I in your book, your binder, that is the non-departmental general fund, and that is the fund that is used to backfill all the accounts that are supported by the general fund. At the bottom of that, you'll see that we currently, within the general fund, have a deficit of $3,880,683. So the goal, the Budget Committee needs to help make the decisions of how we are going to resolve the $3.8 million deficit in order for us to submit a balanced budget to the Oregon Department of Revenue.
What's the timeline on that, Kena?
We need to have this completed no later than June 15th so that we can have the Board of Commissioners approve it on the 20th, I believe it's the 20th, June 20th budget. Oh, sorry. Yeah, the June 20th budget meeting, so we can have that submitted for July 1.
Okay. All right.
So any questions at this time? Any questions about the comparison document that I provided you from FY24's approved to FY25's proposed? Okay, so let's just quickly go line by line then, fund by fund, within that document. The colorful one. So the BOPDA fund, that is a grant, no grant, it's a -- Yes, a part of the CAFSA grant. So that budget is a 9% decrease over previous year's budget. The second one is clerks, election, and recording. We did combine elections and recording from two separate into one general fund line item. The staff work across each fund, so it's easier and more transparent to have it all within one fund. So we combined that. So with the combination of the two, it's a 1% increase. Treasure, over FY24, it's a 26% decrease. That is due to a reduced FTE. We now just have the treasure within that fund. Taxation, that is a 21% decrease from the approved 24 budget. Assessor is a 14% increase. District Attorney is a 17% decrease. Juvenile is a 6% decrease. The road operating funds, and these next few again are not general fund-supported funds. The road department operating fund is a 21% decrease, primarily due to some position changes that have been taking place within the road fund. Bike and footpath within the road fund, that is 54% increase. Those are funds that are given to us by the state, and we're only allowed to use that for the bike and the footpath. So that is money that we automatically dispense for that. Capital improvements within the road funds, it is an 8% decrease, and that 8% decrease is without the transfer to the Sheriff's Department. General service insurance, it's an 89% decrease, and that is because the fund balance has decreased. That is a self-insurance for equipment costs, and due to budget shortfalls, there just hasn't been the transfers into that fund for reserves essentially for equipment, self-insurance. General vehicle services is 31% increase. That is due to the cost of normal parts and such for vehicles. The cost of supplies have increased significantly, and again, those aren't general fund-supported. The county clerk fund, or county record fund, that is a 49% decrease, and that, I believe, is a transfer that went into elections and recording. Am I correct? A transfer we did in that?
Yeah, that's the offset to RGS.
Yes. Law library, 9% increase. Again, that is received from the state to keep up law records for council and litigants in the county, so not supported by general fund. The sheriff's special projects fund is an increase. That money is, or having a transfer, $500,000 budgeted transfer, the sheriff has budgeted to take money out of the special projects and transfer it into civil and patrol to help offset the deficit there. It's a one-time transfer. Search and rescue is a 17% decrease. Search and rescue does have a lot of state funding to help offset. Marine patrol is just a 1% increase. It's really a slight increase. Again, a lot of that funding is funded by state dollars. Jail custody services is a 12% decrease. That is not general fund dollars. That is money that is used for commensary and such required within the jail that, when people buy commensary, it's not general fund dollars or spendable dollars, restricted funds. Civil criminal and patrol is a 14% decrease. Reduction again is offsetted by the $500,000 transfer from the sheriff's special project fund. The jail is a 7% increase. Communications is a 14% increase. Parole and probation is a 2% increase. Towers operation and maintenance is a 7% increase. That is money that everybody that uses the towers pays money into, a lot of maintenance requirements for the towers, and increased cost of those services and maintenance to keep our towers for communication, 911, all that up to date. Tower capital, for capital expenditures on the tower is 7% increase. That is due to rollover funds. I did go back and look at the past two audited years because rollover funds weren't accurately documented in our system due to the lag in financial reporting. So we did have increased rollover dollars, which raised that fund by 7%. And again, these ones, these next few are not general fund-supported. So special reserves court mediation is 8% increase. Again, that is rollover fund dollars, so contingency dollars at the end. Special reserve court security is a 15% increase. Again, this is due to 15% of rollover dollars from previous audited years. Special reserve solid waste is 105% increase. That, again, is rollover dollars that were not documented in prior years that do exist in that fund that we're rolling over. Port Orford landfill, 8% increase due to rollover dollars. Pay grant, 7% increase due to rollover dollars. Special reserve TLT, or the transient lodging tax, is status quo. Special reserve American Rescue Plan is a 69% decrease. These are one-time dollars that were spent down due to our cyber attack, so that is why there's a 69% decrease within those funds. LATCF, which is the local, sorry, local and tribal consistency fund, is a 94% decrease. That is due to one-time dollars spent down last year into the Sheriff's Department. County fair event center is a 7% decrease. County fair, fair operations is an 18% decrease. That is because we combined, there was payroll dollars coming out of fair operations, which really, it needs to come out of the fair event center, and then the small portion that is used to administer and have the fair should just be transferred over into the event center. Fair TLT dollars are status quo because we did not, we did not spend any of those for capital expenditures within the fair. Community development planning is a 45% decrease. This is a projected decrease with the current planning director, reducing some expenditures within that account. Planning Department is a 10% increase. Private septic is a 20% increase. Animal control, animal control lived within the code enforcement account, which has, was closed in FY24, so it's a new fund that was created. Community development surveyor is a 183% increase. This increase is having a county surveyor instead of a contracted surveyor. Code compliance is also a new fund. The code enforcement fund was closed. Code compliance is a standalone position now, so that is a new fund that we're stating there. Cornerstone preservation, that is a restricted fund, can only be used for surveyor-type items, so, but it is a status quo, no change budget. GIS operations is a 20% decrease. Economic development is a 10% increase. That is working off of TLT dollars and some other grants that come in to the county for development of our economic situation. Tourism and promotion is a 28% decrease. That decrease is because there is not a budgeted TLT transfer in the proposed budget. County parks is a 28% decrease. That is not a general fund-supported fund. Emergency management is a 34% increase. That is because of a large grant that was received, and those are rollover funds. Emergency services aquatics is a 22% increase. Again, several grants that are funding that. Veteran services is a 6% decrease. This is half of an FTE that we removed out of veteran services. The next few, again, are not supported by general fund. So federal grants, the VOKA grant, is 11% decrease. The DESART grant ended in FY24, so that will not appear as a budgeted item for '25, but will be in our budget for three years until it clears out. State grant number 17 for criminal fines is a 29% increase. Again, those are state dollars that we receive. The ADPEP and TPEP grant is an 18% decrease. Moving staffing around. Reserve funds, so PERS, we are not putting any more money. We have $230,000, and we haven't for the last two fiscal years put any money into the PERS liability account for paydown of liability due to our budget shortfalls. Unemployment, we are self-insured for unemployment, so this 16% increase are fund dollars that each fund pays their share based on an ordinance to help fund our self-unemployed insurance. County schools is a 5% decrease, and this is an estimate the treasurer and I came to in regards to just pass-through dollars. Those are not dollars that the county has any access to. Those are just literally pass-through dollars that come into us, and the treasurer passes them through to the school districts. And then we have three Title III funds, and we do not have any Title III projects currently, and so those are all zero-change numbers and balances. The last few are administrative services. Administrative services are the cost of doing business. Commissioners is a 4% increase. The BOC is a 2% increase. Accounting is a 44% increase, largely due to really poor budgeting, inadequate audit estimates, and a finance director. County council is a 31% increase. This also uncovers legal costs, legal issues, and there's something else in there I can't think of off the top, sorry. Payroll and personnel, we added a half FTE due to the county's FTE status. A lot of legal changes that have came through with personnel post-pandemic. So we are rewriting policy manuals and changing different processes to make sure we are concurrent with everything. Information and technology is a 2% decrease due to spending down some of the ARP monies that were allocated last fiscal year for our cyber attack. Occupancy is a 34% decrease. That is due to getting, cutting out some of the unnecessary wants of new paint, new doors or such. We cut those out. And then building and repair, again, is a 30% decrease. The maintenance director looked at those and, again, cut a lot of unnecessary capital repairs that we did not need within that fund. So that overall takes us to that $5,894,173 decrease from FY24's budget.
So, Kena, so essentially, I'm trying to, you know, in, now, these are proposed budgets by the departments?
Correct.
Yeah. And so in general fund, general fund obligated departments, we have $9,556,183 of asks.
Correct.
And $5,792,000 in resources.
Correct.
So we have to fit nine million, nine and a half million, any better, into five and The, so essentially, it's 41%. Now, the general funded areas are all of our mandated, pretty much a lot of our mandated services. In conjunction with that, I don't know if you caught, but the sheriffs have transferred $500,000 into, from special projects into their proposed road civil crim budget, and those dollars are one-time dollars. So if they're used, there will be more reductions next year. So we have to, we have to navigate this effort.
So 41% reductions, let's kind of go around the room here, and we can have a discussion about that. John, do you have anything?
My head is swimming.
All right. Nick?
I guess first off, in looking at some of the rollover funds, can we then, where are we on as far as reconciliation?
We're done.
We're done, so we are caught up?
We're caught up.
Okay, that's a good.
Yes, we are, we are 100% caught up. We're almost complete with our FY23 audit. The auditors have been in here, are compiling final information. So we are as current as we can be, which I'm really excited to see.
Yeah, that's great, because we're dealing with what we know.
Yep, these are confirmed numbers.
Then I guess for me, you know, it's kind of like what Walt first brought up was, you know, looking at stuff like what does, what is required of us as the county government and what is not? I mean, that's kind of where I look first. And then, you know, looking at our FTEs, past and present and future, like where are all the departments, what's open positions, what has been filled, and go department by department and list that stuff out for them to self-analyze first. The assessor did it last year. We're combining some of the open positions into single, any FTE, unfortunately, if you drop FTV, something, that's all the other stuff that goes with the medical and the PERS and the benefits that can really save some money. And I would be very curious, I mean, looking historically where we are as a county, 10 years ago, how many FTEs we had versus now. I don't have a lot. I mean, I've only been, this is kind of second year, and last year, I felt kind of like a fake exercise in budgeting just because we didn't know where we were or what was coming on. So getting some of the historical stuff, how much have we grown in employees and what new services have we added? And, you know, as we look at that, obviously, the big one is, you know, of course, the sheriff, just because they're the largest budget carrier, I mean, they cover a lot of ground, and so looking through their stuff as well. And it's not just them, of course, like I say, each department going through and looking at open positions, but looking at coverages and what can we do with technology and sharing, sharing resources with cities, you know? I guess everything's on the table at this point. I know it's a very generic and bland kind of statement, but I mean, that's really looking closely at how we staff and what we staff.
Well, with 41% cuts, metrics become very important, for sure. Dave?
Yeah, not even specific that he didn't say.
All right.
We were doing a lot of cuts and stuff, but I feel like Curry County is always, we need to figure ways to bring money in, of course, you know? I think we have an amazing coastline, super, the people, everybody wants to come to, and I feel like we shoot ourselves in the foot a lot with limiting people's abilities to come and stay here. And I think there's a lot of avenues to bring more money into the county if we were just a little bit more creative with that. Bike stuff, I mean, you know, I'm big on recreation, but this is like adventure capital of the world, you know? You look at places like New Zealand who match our kind of infrastructure, but that's, that's a whole nother deal, but that's where my mind always goes, is we got to bring some more money into this county.
Dan?
Well, this is my first year, so I'm trying to get my, I'm wrapping up on this stuff. I had one question, it's just my lack of knowledge here, but you were talking I had one question, it's just my lack of knowledge here, but you were talking about the transfer of the 500,000 to the civil patrol and then it came out of the special projects? I'm not seeing that. So what am I missing on? So we had six, we had 593 last year, 678 this year, and then the 500, where's the 500 coming from?
It comes out of the special projects. There's monies that go into the special projects every fun, or every year, donations and such. So there is a one time transfer out of the 500. Those are total budget numbers at the end, so that would reflect the transfer out in addition to the reserve.
If that didn't happen, what would that number look like then under that special project?
It would still be that amount because that's total. It would still be the 679. If you want to look at, I believe it's N is the sheriff's reserve item.
Special revenue?
Or special projects, sorry. And if you look.
Sheriff's special revenue, that's N?
Yep.
Uh, yes. Yep. And it's the fourth page in, I believe, you'll see sheriff's special projects.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. So the total proposed budget is the donations of 1,500, K9 unit donations of 1,500, miscellaneous revenue of 125, and then restricted fund balance, which was $550, I'm sorry, $550,000. Some materials and services, and then there is the one time transfer that you see, the transfer to criminal civil patrol. And then that would leave 137,800 in the operating contingency for that fund for next year.
Okay.
So it shows as an increased total budget line item increase because of increased revenues, donation revenues or miscellaneous revenues and an increased fund balance that rolled over from prior year.
So, I'm sorry, so I missed it. So how can you have the 500 in the 678 and the 500 in the 3163?
Because it's total budget. These are total budgets.
Okay.
Total budget numbers.
I thought you were taking it out of the 678.
It is coming out of the 678, but it's got to reflect as a budgeted number coming out and a total budget number also, because these are total budget numbers in the fund that it's transferred into.
So is it showing as a resource?
It's a resource in one, yes.
An expense in the other.
I got you. Okay. Thank you.
Resources revenue, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm a private business guy, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good.
Got you. You talked about the, this is just a curiosity, the surveyor and that we were contracting for surveying last year, now we're, we have our own surveyor?
Um, that's the, the proposed.
Okay.
Is bringing in, so, so we had a contractor and then we had, the contractor moved to a point, point five FTE within the surveyor fund. This would bring the surveyor full time in, splitting his time between planning and surveying, salary fringe, and then having a half time office person that we currently do have currently. That just increases our personnel services by that much.
But I mean, what, what the numbers look like? So you were contracting before, what's the net impact to?
So the surveyor is under community development, so tab R. And again, these are total budget numbers, so it would be the total required. So the resources would be 377,728. That's up significantly from FY24's resources. This is due to an increase in a transfer from the general fund as well as increases to fees that we could receive. By, the surveyor did implement some, some additional fees on, on documents. Personnel services is increased bring, due to bringing a surveyor in house. Da, 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 da.
I guess my question is what, what, what work was done to look at contracting, you know, revenue, pay the contractor versus revenue in hiring a surveyor? What's the net?
I actually do not know what, what work was done in order to.
And I'm just looking at that one.
Yeah.
Just so I know, I mean, somebody must have done some math to see if that one pencils or doesn't pencil or?
Our contract surveyor resigned, actually, that was out of Coos Bay. They, didn't they, they called it quits. So we brought Scott Fine on from Jackson County. And he can also, through the cornerstone restoration, he can bring revenue into the county. He's just a really, he's a good surveyor and.
Oh, I don't, no doubt.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just asking, like, when you look at doing those kind of things, does somebody run the numbers and say, we're better to contract, we're better to hire? Is it a net, is it beneficial to the county financially or is it costing us more or what?
And these are numbers, these are questions that I can look more into.
I'm not picking on the surveyor.
No, no, you're, you're good. These are the questions you're supposed to ask. Yep.
And then, I think we all talked about fees a little bit, but have we looked at all the fees and where we are with fees and what we can do with fees as far as obviously increasing them?
Well, we're going to have to increase them.
Right.
And we're going to have to pass that cost on to the people. But, I mean, we have 41% deficit, so we're going to have to, whether we want to or not, we're going to have to increase those fees.
So do we have a list of fees, where they're at, what we can do, what have, what have people done under budget so far to increase fees?
I know that some departments have increased fees. Building had reevaluated their, their fee schedule. I know this.
Of course, don't help us, right, isn't it?
Correct, correct.
The only thing that really would would be the clerk, which she's evaluated hers and made.
Clerk fees are all set by statute.
Okay, so there's no adjustments there?
Building, planning.
Parks.
Parks. We have.
Business license fees.
Yep, and economic development.
But we have a master fee schedule. I think that's what you're asking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what we, what we can lawfully increase, we will, and that will certainly help, but it's pretty minimal.
And they're all in the wrong, I mean, not the funds that are short. That's the other piece of it, right? They're all. But even whatever they are would.
Yes.
Yeah.
As part of this process is.
Yeah.
Excuse me, did you, there was, it's very broken. Did somebody have a question for me?
Was that Ted?
Oh.
No. No one had a question, Ted.
It was weird, like speaking through walls.
I can, I can basically only hear Kena because she seems to be speaking into the mic, but I cannot hear, I cannot hear anybody else.
You're talking?
Where, where is his?
I have no idea. Natasha, do we know where the phone is for him?
Is there a phone down here on this bench?
Maybe she has it plugged in.
Oh, can you turn it up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's the walls.
I know, we're all like looking around.
Just my, my last comment would be similar, I think, what everybody, I mean, law enforcement is critically important to everybody in this community. And I think as we look at all this, I mean, metrics are what drives any business and government and or, or private, and I think really digging into some metrics of coverages and things like that are going to be really, really, really important. And I'm not an expert on law enforcement, I know you are, but I think that's something that we're really going to have to dig into and look at. That's where the big dollars are and what kind of coverage is and what are we getting today and so the citizens know, you know, what these impacts are going to be. And I think it's really important we have that as soon as we can get it, unless it's already available. I haven't seen it.
So, Dan, regarding those metrics, yes, I am very familiar with how they drive in, in the law enforcement profession, how they drive funding and deployment of resources. So I can absolutely help in identifying what those metrics are. So one of the responsibilities of this budget to committee is to make recommendations on where these 41% cuts are going to come from. So what I can do, what I can do is prepare a detailed list of law enforcement related metrics and then get those to the sheriff by the end of the day so we can gauge that statistical information into our process of deciding what, how these cuts are going to lay out. And I can, you know, from calls for service, response time, staffing levels, crime rates, et cetera, I'll, I'll prepare a detailed list, get that to the sheriff, and then we'll get that information back and, and factor that into our process of decision making. What I'll do, what I'll do is I will prepare that, I'll have the director of operations review it, and then I'll send it out by the end of the day today, and then I will make sure everybody on the committee is CC'd to receive it so you can review it. And then if there's something that you want to see or add to it, we can, we can definitely make those adjustments. But I'm, I'm comfortable providing that. Captain McDonald has a question.
Yeah, the question about the deficit that we're looking at right now, does that include any transfers from anywhere else besides general fund monies? Does it include anything else that's available to the county? Before we start talking about cutting positions in a, in a sheriff's office that is barely covering the services that we need. You know, we talked about there was an increase in communication, an increase in corrections, and a decrease in patrol. Our submitted budget already cuts four positions out of the patrol side. It cuts none out of the jail and none out of communications because those two are already minimally staffed. So before we start looking at where we're going to cut, and then when, if you start cutting positions out of patrol again, we're already barely covering our people out there. So now we're going to effectively create issues within the community for safety and then also put our own personnel at a higher safety risk than they already have. We already all know that the job that we signed up for, the job that we do has its own inherent risks, all right? But when we purposely cut our, the base up from underneath our people and their backup and the people they have to support them, then we're putting our, our employees at risk. So what I'm asking is, and I'm going to just, I'm going to just throw it out there, are you guys looking at doing a transfer from the road reserves to support what is a legitimate and legal use of those funds to, to support the sheriff's office? That's, that's the question out there. So if we're looking at cutting after doing a transfer from the road reserve, that's one thing. If we're looking at doing a cut without doing a transfer from the road reserve, that's something else. So that's my question. Because I know the sheriff can't be here today, but he would, and, and his message to the budget board is to use whatever funds are available to the county to support law enforcement and to support public safety. So my question is, does that deficit have any transfer from, that can legally be transferred to support certain aspects of law enforcement or patrol and its functions? Is there a transfer in the proposed budget to help with that?
Okay, let's, let's talk about that. Current balance in road fund reserves?
17,800,000, I believe.
Okay. So if we pull money out of the road fund reserves, how long before this county is bankrupt?
Um, under five years.
Okay.
Three to five years.
So.
Excuse me, I'd, I'd like to cut in for one moment on, it, it's been my understanding that use of the road funds was a, was a stopgap measure, an emergency allowance made available by the governor so that we could, so that the various counties could, could come up with a funding solution. And I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that long-term use of those was, was intended. That's not what the legislative history says anyway.
Yeah, so I guess to answer Captain's direct question is no, in this, in this, what's before us is, is not including transfers from road funds. I think we understand that it's legal, that it's there. I think what we have to really determine is, is it responsible? That's the question. Are we going to, because, you know, my take is this, the people spoke and they spoke very convincingly. They spoke many times, as many of you have been here through decades of different levy opportunities that have never passed. And so that, the road funds are, should, I mean, in my eyes, are no longer considered a bridge to finding a funding solution, which I think was the intent in the past. Now, I mean, the interest accrued on the, on the investment account from those road funds, I, I think is, is a, is a suitable look, you know, use, which is approximately about $800,000, I think. But, you know, the analogy was raised with me like this. You know, you, you, you retire and you meet with your financial advisor and they say, if you continue on the current spending path that you're on right now, you will be flat broke and lose everything within three to five years. So you have a couple of options. If you plan to die before then, continue to spend. But if you don't, if you, if you expect to sustain, then you need to make adjustments and, or you go out and get another job to support your spending, which would be for us getting new revenues. So, I mean, I, I, yeah, the, is it legal? Yes. Is it available? Yes. Is it responsible? That's the question that we have to answer. And I'll tell you right now, I personally, well, there's four of us here who have every personal reason to want to fund the sheriff's department and especially patrol because we live in the county and we have businesses in the county. So we are, we have very high personal drive to do that, but again, we aren't here for that. We are here to preserve the county and that's the, that is our, that is our mandate in this role. And so is it responsible? So, I mean, obviously we have to discuss this. We have to kick it back and forth, we have to go down that road. But let's just say, let's just say, we use road funds to cover the $2.1 million ask in patrol. We're still too short, right? As of right now, we have 5 million, 5 and a half million dollars in resources and the sheriff's department alone is asking for six. That's not, that's not funding any other mandated service. So it's, this is going to be the most difficult conversation this county has faced in a really, really long time. That's the reality.
And the people have spoken. And the people have spoken. And it's clear, very clear. Now, long-term? Long-term, okay. We had a conversation recently about, and I spoke to Kylie about this very, very briefly with the assessor about special districts, forty-two of them, charging an assessment fee of that. In our brief conversation, there are some statutes that say, no, you can't do that. And so I think it's important that we take a deep dive, legal look at that and see if there is any way that we can generate maybe a 5%, 4%, 3% fee for administrating those special districts. And if there is a lawful way that we can do that, then I want to pursue it. But that's long-term. That is not going to happen by June 16th. The other is natural resources. This county is rich with them. And we have been advocating for use of those natural resources. We will continue to advocate for the use of those resources, but we need to step that up. We need to put more pressure on. We need to fight even harder than we have been because of the position we're in. But that's not going to be done by June 16th. And we also have some creative ideas that I want to push forward, that I support pushing forward and advocating for those timber rights and resources. And then the other place to raise revenue is raising fees, which we talked about. But that's a pretty small drop in the bucket, but we will definitely have to raise fees and pass those costs on. It's going to happen. But what our real focus is, is in the short term. And that is this cliff we're standing on, June 16th, which is right around the corner. And 41% is where we're at. Now, to Captain's point, there is absolutely no way that I would support putting a deputy out in a situation where his safety's at risk or her safety's at risk. That being said, we won't put anybody out before we put somebody out by themselves or in a situation that, that they're going to find themselves in jeopardy by just doing the work. We're not going to do that. I'm not going to support that. But that's reality. That's where we're at.
Well, and we've heard from Dan in other meetings that he's, he's not going to send his ambulances in there without law enforcement there, which, why would you?
They already don't. I mean, they don't go without us through a lot of calls.
And we, and so I'm thinking, Dan and I had a quick meeting on Sunday morning and just visited. So we, if, if this didn't pass, so that same town hall meeting we had just not that long ago, we've got to, we've got to advertise and do that same thing again and at the, at the fairgrounds or whatever and let the whole county know, this is where we're at. It didn't pass and we're, we're on this cliff and we got to find a solution. So tell us what, you know, tell us what you want.
I think we're a little late to the party. It's going to have to be after these decisions are made.
Well, we, we made this clear. We told them what's coming. I mean, I don't know how much clearer we could give that message, you know? I mean, people don't want to pay that much money for that, for the service. Now, you know.
The train's left the station.
What, what is enough money? A dollar or 50 cents, 75 cents? But then again, what is that, the amount of income that's going to generate is going to provide less service than we have today.
Once we lose people that.
They're not coming back and they're going to be gone and, and that's inevitable. We talked about all this. We, we've already gone down this road and made it very clear at these town hall meetings. But here we are. So we got to deal with what we have.
Well, I think as we talked about, I mean, the scrutiny we're giving the sheriffs is also the scrutiny we need to give to, I mean, every department.
Of course.
Dan was talking about the surveyor. I mean, if fees coming in are $30,000 and we're going to then change personnel services up to $250,000, I mean, making sure that that is, what are the metrics on that?
Sure.
Of course.
Person going to bring in. I mean, those departments that actually have fees and revenue, I mean, obviously need to be self-sufficient to support themselves and potentially even, I mean, have enough overflow to then support other departments. I mean, I am open to, you know, obviously the levy didn't pass. I mean, I am still open to using an amount of road funds to help support the sheriff, probably not in the full amount. We need to find a declining balance over the years. And again, looking at scrutiny in departments to really scrutinize, like, what is the mission of the sheriffs? I mean, are we support to the cities? How can we change dynamics? Do we, I mean, can the jail be lessened on beds? I mean, all of those things. I think as we go through that in a better presentation, I mean, yes, more levies will come and more votes are going to be had on this because, I mean, I know I, my assets are in Agnes. We already have limited to no government.
Yeah.
The rest of the county will feel that, you know? So, I mean, I am open, again, not to use everything, but to find ways to decline balances and then really hone in on ways that, you know, we can better function, sheriff first and then the rest of the county also to follow suit, like, really look tightly at things.
Well, the same metrics that I'm going to request from the sheriff, I think each department's going to have to provide the same. And, you know, we, we have to, we have to make a decision and that decision is based on information that is presented to us. So we need that information to make the most informed decision we can. And.
And even in those situations, the decisions are going to be extremely difficult to make because, I mean, there's going to be an incredible amount of justification, but there's not enough resources, revenues to support all those justifications. But yes, we have to start there.
And, and that's the reality. And to your point, the mission has got to change, you know? We're going to have to cut jail capacity down. It's going to have to. Criminals are going to get released back in the community. That's going to happen. The district attorney's office is not going to be able to prosecute all the criminals that he's been prosecuting. It's not going to happen. So we need to change and refine what that mission is going to be. We have a certain amount of money to work with. That's it. That's it.
But so just some of the things that I've heard that I think would be extremely useful when we, when we reconvene, right? When we bring back is the metrics that you, you and Dan discussed. And then also that 10-year FTE breakdown and what, what services increased or decreased in those 10 years with those FTE changes, right? I think that.
That's another important metric.
I think it's a great metric to look at. I mean, it's, I, it certainly is. It was the first thing that I did when I came on board as a current commissioner because I had noticed that FTEs were much higher than when I had left. And so I wanted to know where those positions were increased in that time. So I think it's, it is an important. So Kena, if we could get like a 2023 FTE breakdown by department and a 2013 breakdown by department. And 2013 is a good one because that's the year that we let mental and, and public health go to a nonprofit. So it's, it's more accurate in terms of services being provided right now.
What other information do we need or want that will help and impact the decision we have to make?
I think relative to the sheriff we've talked about, but I just think really understanding and I, Captain, I talked the other day a little bit, just understanding the, the actual, the actual impact and what that means in terms of dollars. So if we're 500 short, we're a million short, we're a million five, you know, what does that mean to the, to the citizens and to our, our county? I think that's, that's important. That's one part of it. And that would be through, you know, all these departments. But I think just more clarity. So I think, you know, a broad statement, it's obviously going to decline, that's, that's great. But I think we need to know exactly what does that mean? And I think they can really tell us and I think it would be very beneficial to get that information you're talking about in our hands quickly. And I think will drive a lot of our, our thinking too. So we, we know, we know they can't do what they do without funding. We understand that. But I think more specific, what does that mean to the community? That's.
So, so there's a couple of ways, I, talking what you just said, how we can kind of look at that. We can, you know, have Kena pull numbers with the reductions and then, you know, look at those and say, work backwards, right? And say, okay, well, what is, what's not acceptable that we have to try to figure out here? We can give direction to all the departments to provide a, a look at what a X amount reduction would look like and then how that's going to affect the community. You know, or.
And I guess I would ask, you know, very novice at this, but is there such a thing as a supplemental budget?
Absolutely. So.
Do the whole year right now? I mean, can we look at, we have a crisis here and I mean, do we need to decide today for the whole year? Can we, can we do something for 90 days to really get a harder look at this and make some really good decisions on the impacts? I mean.
We, we have to have an approved budget by July 1.
For how long?
Well, it has to be your annual budget, right? But you can do supplementals anytime throughout the year, right? So we'd have to have, we'd have to have a balanced approved budget by July 1.
What happens if you don't? Who comes, who comes and eats us? What happens?
We get audit, audit findings.
So big day, we get audit. What happens?
Well, the problem with that is that it puts us, puts us at risk for federal and state funding, which we've already had audit findings for the last three, three years. Yeah. Okay.
Well, and I also, I don't know that if you don't have an approved budget, you can't approve expenditures, you know, so.
I guess my question, we couldn't do a, a 90-day budget right now with the idea that we're going to get to our annual budget after 90 days? That's not allowed.
No, it would need to be an annual, annual budget with a supplemental.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, obviously, I don't know if anybody's prepared to make any decisions today. I think today we just wanted to get the information from last night's results and kind of a direction going forward. What all is, would be besides metrics, FTE look would be vital to this decision-making process?
Fees.
Fees?
Talking about required versus not required.
Mandated versus non-mandated?
Yeah.
Are there any?
Actually, those are, can be kind of tough because, I mean, some of the non-mandated are grant-funded or state-funded.
They're partially, yeah.
Yeah, so it might be, I don't know how you.
Just break it out and you identify it and then we know.
Yeah, whether it's non-mandated, but yet 80% of its budget comes from state funding.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody mentioned, Walter, somebody, is there any collaborative efforts with our little cities and that we can work on any other sharing?
One of the issues that we're going to find with collaboration this late into the game is that most people have already solidified their FY '25 budgets and they have been approved. We're, we're definitely behind the eight ball, waiting for the decision on the levy. So normally those are, those are, you know, those type of intergovernmental agreements are, are worked on months ahead. But I would make the suggestion, as, as Jay stated, of showing you what the 41% would look like in these funds and then working backwards of how to add, you know, what is not workable within those adjustments and then add back to it. So that way you have worst-case scenario and then we, we fix it based on the worst-case scenario.
But to Dan's point, we're just, we're in, we're in the here and now of this crisis, but we, we have to continue to look forward.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
So if we start exploring some of those intergovernmental agreements or potential opportunities to combine service, we can start those discussions so that we may have a better platform coming into this in the future. I mean, right now, it's just kind of shock and awe, you know, but.
Absolutely. We need to be proactive and, and look ahead.
Yeah, because this problem isn't going to, it's not going to go away. And, you know, there's, this is this year's budget.
Yeah. And just coming into, coming into this, it looked like a lot of budgets were reactive and not proactive when there were budget shortfalls. And that, that got us to the situation that we're in.
Brad, when you mentioned administration fees for special districts.
Yep.
And Kylie said we, there's, there's absolutely no way or?
So there's law that prohibits it.
But ORS states that we are to provide those services.
Right, we shall provide.
Yes, so I mean, it could be explored, I'm not saying.
Sure.
I know that Jena's explored it in the past. I don't think we're going to.
Well.
But I, I thought Kena was talking to Department of Revenue was last time.
So, so the first thing is to ask the Department of Revenue if we can lawfully do it and if we're told we absolutely cannot, then the second step would be to go to each of the districts and say, we would like you to provide us with a whatever percent fee for administrating the special districts and see which special districts might be willing to contribute to that. You know, if we got 5% from all of the special districts we administer that for, it would be, what would it be, Jay? A million, million four?
Million four.
Million four, something like that.
Voluntarily. If they voluntarily.
If they voluntarily did it, which I don't expect that every district would do it, but if we could lawfully charge that fee, it's, you know, it's a million four.
I just want to cut in here, I just want to cut in here and say that, that that might, you know, I don't know that a special district can voluntarily redirect its money outside of its own mission. So I think, I think that would be problematic that they would be gifting it to us.
The, I think, so just a little, I've looked into this a little. I haven't gone in-depth with Department of Revenue or anything. But to provide some clarity, what we're talking about is the assessor, taxation, and the treasurer truly work for every tax district in our county. They work to go do a proper assessments, collect the tax as a whole and disseminate those taxes as, as per ORS or whatever their tax rate is. So they, they truly do work for the entirety of all the districts. And so when we brought this up, you know, I reached out to AOC and I was said, that's Association of Oregon County, it's not, not the other one we see on TV. And, and they said, there's nothing in ORS that says you can't, right? So then we have to get into this, you know, this piece, well, what is the, what is the authority of the border commissioners? So then when you, when you go back to the authority of the border commissioners, that they, they hold legal jurisdiction over everything within the county borders. So it's, it'll be interesting to explore. We would, they, they were very interested in how we move forward because this would be a, a key thing for many counties. So they wanted to know if we did do this, that, they wanted to make sure that it was something that many counties knew about. But that's, that's essentially the essence, the reason. The county would also have to pay 5%, you know, as a tax district that's receiving the services that the assessor and taxation and treasurer are providing. So at any rate, the, the unique thing about it is, is that if it was. So at any rate, the, the unique thing about it is, is that if it was to be done, it would, it would cover, it would cover assessment and taxation almost wholly, which opens up opportunities to provide more services. So, and it's a sustainable model. That's the other piece that's really nice about it is assessor and taxation would never necessarily be in jeopardy because that is a model that could be put on through the years going forward, so.
But realistically, it's part of the long-term vision and part of a fight that is ahead of us and helps us, not at all right now. You know, the pushback on that from a district would be litigation, and we all know how long that takes. So, but that's one of those fights that we're absolutely willing to fight. Same thing with, you know, with, with exploring all of the different options. We can put pressure on the government regarding the natural resources we have here. But whatever we, whatever action we may take there, there'll be pushback, which will be litigation, which takes time. So those are all things that are part of the long-term strategies that at least we're considering.
Just one, or a question on the revenue side, resource side, excuse me. Do, what does our assessor say about where he's at with assessed values and making sure that we're, where we're supposed to be?
Kylie's here.
Our assessor's right there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I mean, we're doing our best to be on a six to seven-year cycle.
Are, are we, or are we, are we not, or?
We're on pace, so we had suffered a huge cut in 2012-ish, where we had two appraisers. Now we're up to four and a half-ish, because she does cartography as well. But if we're looking at cutting our budget, I mean, I mean, that's, we wouldn't qualify for the CAFSA grant. And also, right before I knock here, I'm looking at Brad here, because I think he'd be interested in this. If we fall below, we're, we're supposed to have 12 employees, we've got nine, we won't receive the funding. Or, I'm sorry, we already are supposed to have 12, we have nine. They turn their eye to it and still give us the funding. They said if we go below, they will not. However, they will not get rid of our department. They will take us on as contract employees, and they will charge the county. So I was in the middle of talking to Department of Revenue prior to coming down here, I didn't know who he was, a 10, something, to see what that cost would look like, because they wouldn't just say, you're done, no taxes. They'd say, well, we'll take you on, and we're gonna give a bill to the county. So it could cost you more money.
But if we look at our, I'm trying to write, how to ask this question. From an assessor's perspective, do you feel that we've, is there room to do more assessing, I guess should say, to generate more revenue? Are we, are, are we caught up? In other words, I mean, one of our key revenue sources is property taxes, right? And I realize we get a small portion of that, but.
Do you think our values are correct? I guess I don't.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, have we, are we out doing the work?
Yeah, and we provide that to Department of Revenue. We do a ratio study that shows where market value is and what we have on our tax rules.
Okay, so we're caught up on that?
Accurate. When you say caught up, there's no way you could visit every property every year. We try to shoot for six to seven years, and guess we're on track with that.
Okay.
With the current staff. If you cut that staffing, no.
Yeah.
It does. If there's new things found, that building permits were, you know, things like that, vote changes.
Right. I mean, the only thing that really would change most people's, or anybody's current values, aside from the annual 3%, is if you made substantial structural changes to your property, right? For the most part. And so, you know, I can, I can attest, I did this summer, and when the permit was finalized, it was like within one week, the assessors were out there looking at the property to reassess it. So I can attest that they are on top of their game.
Hopefully, we can learn from history. Like Kylie said, this happened in 2012, and the assessor's office went way down in FTEs, and here we are. So when you don't keep up with those, it's, it's detrimental to everybody.
It affects our money. I did reach out to the Department of Revenue, and I emailed and left a message and have not heard back in regards to that 5%. When I first spoke with a live person, they were very leery of giving me an answer and wanted me to leave a message. So I have not heard back to date.
Okay, so we've got a pretty good list of information we need that will, will go out, and we will, we'll get back and process. Is there anything else that we need? And what is the recommendation from this committee on how we proceed from here?
We need to proceed promptly. I know that this isn't something that we are going to decide, I think, in one meeting. I think there's gonna be several back and forths with things. So I think we need to put several meetings on the books right away and make sure we get our metrics and make these priority, these asks priorities, so we can make sure we bring them right away and provide ourselves with the best information to make the decisions.
Yeah, I was thinking like, obviously, there's gonna be, we need some time to gain, gain this data that we're asking for. And so today is Wednesday. You know, and so I would think maybe if we reconvened, I mean, next Tuesday, and just go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of this, you know, as long as we, you know, we will only be able to hit a few departments a day when we're asking for this much information. There's gonna be a lot of, a lot of information, a lot of dialogue to, to, you know, absorb. So I would think if we just Xed out Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, that'll give us an opportunity to get really familiar with the information that we just requested from the departments.
That really gives us only two and a half days, Jay, because Monday's a holiday. Right? Memorial Day. Monday's a holiday. So we got Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Well, I'm for meeting on Tuesday because we are way behind the timeline. And it's, it's two and a half days, but there's also a weekend. And we gotta do what we gotta do. So I'm for meeting on, for the next meeting being on Tuesday.
I mean.
Is that good with everybody? Time of day.
Friday's better.
Yeah, just knowing that we have the information ready to actually decipher and go.
I absolutely can have my part done. I'll make sure to have my part done. So I will provide the FTE breakdown. So for clarity for the departments, I can email and reach out to all department heads. And do you want me to give the 41% cut and start with that and ask them what these declines would look like and, and services? Or what, how do you want me to proceed with the departments?
What's the board's recommendation?
Yeah, to see what the cuts would look like. I guess, you know, as far as advertised position, those that are filled and those that are still open. And I guess, yeah, any summary of what, what that cut would mean for services.
I currently have a position open, and it's an appraiser, and I need it. So I mean, I don't think we should just look at open positions as being ones I should go.
Not necessarily what's on the chopping block, but just, I mean, truly where you stand at the moment, so that would be, be with this. Yeah, this is an open position.
I lose another appraiser at the end of the month, who's moving back to Sweden, so I'll be down with two appraisers.
Yeah. And for reference, I mean, the CAFSA grant is 200,000 a year, right? So you're gonna get away losing employees and then.
Sure.
Stuff like that, with the grants and.
And the CAFSA grant, just so you know, it's 200,000 out of assessor, but it also affects the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, and the GIS. So that grant, and it pays for some IT services, so it actually encompasses several different departments.
But the FTE is only one of the assessor's office.
Correct. Well, yes, that portion of it, yes, and the assessors. Yep.
So it, it kinda feels like we're dancing around this 41%, right?
Yeah.
But that's the reality. That's the reality. So we start there.
Okay.
We start at 41%, and we look at that, and then we make the adjustments from there based on the information and feedback we get back. That's what we have. That's the, we only have that much money. That's what we have.
But I think a key part of that, though, would be if each department can, is to show us incrementally, start worst-case scenario, like you're saying, and incrementally, so we can have some idea if we fill that position as an example, what would that be? And, and, and look at the cost benefit of that. And, and same with the sheriff and so forth. Look at what, what comes back in certain increments.
Okay.
We don't get a lot back. We give a lot, we don't get a lot back. We don't make money.
I understand.
So are the admin services going to cut their budgets too? Because that's a lot of our budget. We're paying a lot more into that than most of my budget itself.
We're gonna cut across the board. Everybody, everybody has to project.
So what time on Tuesday? It's a good time for everybody. 10 o'clock again? Does that work? All right. So that is the 28th. So Tuesday, the 28th, now do you, do we wanna block out the next two days and tentatively schedule that?
Thursday, I'm, can't do it, but Friday I could.
Go Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Let's see what we get done, Tuesday, Wednesday.
We'll tentatively schedule Friday, and we'll reevaluate after Wednesday.
Okay.
10 a.m. on Wednesday as well?
Yes. Any further discussion? All right. No further discussion, then we will adjourn this meeting at this time and reconvene on Tuesday, the 28th, at 10 a.m.